If the call is being ordered, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Allen?
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Mistravich?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Yarick?
Here.
Good to see everybody's here. And the approval of minutes for the city council meeting of October 17th will be in order.
Motion?
Support.
Has been made, and supportive, discussion on those minutes.
Mr. Mayor, those, the minutes tonight should reflect that Councilor Green should have been excused at last, last council meeting. She had contacted administration to let us know she'd be out of town.
Okay. We should, being that did not happen in that meeting, is it appropriate to put it in those minutes or in the minutes?
I would do the minutes tonight. A motion could be made at some point, maybe after the, these are approved, wherever you want.
Okay. We shall note if it's okay with the council, we shall note in the minutes that she would be excused from last week's meeting due to being out of town. Is there any concerns with that? Does anybody have any problems with that?
None.
Okay, very good. Okay. Otherwise, any other discussion on the minutes? Being that all in favor of the minutes, signify by, or motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Do we have a motion for the quarterly roundtable meeting of the city council on October 18th?
I'll make a motion, support.
Has been made and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Moving on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. I think you're both here tonight for agenda items unless you'd like to speak to some other issue. We will move on. Doctrine of agenda, Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Counsel, any changes?
Nope.
Being that a motion to accept the agenda as presented, be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Has been made and supported. Any discussion? Being that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Has been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have four this evening. The first one being consideration of lot split combination requests from the Richmond Community Schools. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider approving the lot split combination request from the Richmond Community Schools, which is, which currently owns two parcels near the intersection of Division Road and Main Street. The first parcel has road frontage on Main Street and is home to the old school auditorium and bus garage. The second parcel is essentially the driveway that services the first. The following two actions will take us, will split a small portion of the odd parcel that contains the old bus garage and a couple other buildings and split that off and place it with the driveway parcel. Then, there's also two easements that will be recorded in advance of us recording the split with the county. One is for a declaration of access easement, which will allow them to have access through the driveway to access the odd. The other is a declaration of water main easement since the bus garage water comes out of the basement of the odd. School Superintendent Brian Walmsley is here tonight if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Superintendent, would you like to address the council on this at all?
Sure.
If you'd use the microphone, please.
The, the two pieces, first one is speak to the odd. We want to continue our partnership. We have no intention of breaking that current 10-year agreement. In fact, we're actually in conversation about extending that agreement for that use. But the old bus garage, when the previous Board of Education built the new bus garage, this building became a vacant storage facility and is no longer used by the district. It's, we've had the gas shut off, the water shut off for a little over a year now. It's, and we have some interest in people buying that property for, for us. So, we look, we're requesting your approval to split the property then.
Any questions, the council?
Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion?
To approve the two lot split combination actions requested from the Richmond Community Schools for parcel 50-07, 06, 02, 226, 003, and 50-07, 06, 02, 226, 005. The action is listed below. Action one, split 2.256 acres from the odd torn in parcel on Main Street, parcel number one. Action two, combine the, with the 2.256 acre parcel created from the split in action number one with the property on Division Road.
Support.
Has been made and supported. Any discussion? Don't see any reason not to support this. Probably actually will clean up the, the area back there by its use, I would imagine, by another private or commercial business. And also, we appreciate the fact that the school board and the administration has chosen to extend that contract to the odd. The city slash TIPA has put a lot of money into that building over the years and with the idea that it would be utilized by the community. And so, we really appreciate you guys extending that for another 10 years. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
And to, in addition to what you spoke to, I like the idea of when government or schools don't need property more, that it gets returned to private use for productive use than to, you know, continue in obsolescence. So, I'm glad to see that property returned to another use. If the school district, as I said, was not going to use it.
Anything else? Tom, do you have anything to say?
Okay.
Can we bring it back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass.
Thank you, sir. Item number two is consideration of the purchase of the Jaws of Life from the fire department. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving the purchase of new set of extrication equipment, otherwise known as Jaws of Life, for the Richmond Volunteer Fire Department. Our current budget includes $29,800 to purchase a new set. Essentially, there will be a new cutter, spreader, and ram. The fire chief and membership of the volunteer fire department are recommending the Hearst extraction equipment quoted by Apollo. They've had several different companies come out and have demoed various styles and, or various companies. And the department and the chief are recommending that we go with this. And so, the city manager is recommending that we waive the purchasing ordinance. It's, this is a little bit more, but it's still within, I think it's, you know, less than $2,000 difference. And just the ease of use during emergencies and the flexibility and, and the durability of, of this, they feel is, is much better and gives an advantage. And so, our recommendation is to waive purchasing ordinance requirements.
Very good. Chief?
Like the city manager has said, we also, we've, we've had both companies out to demo their equipment. The first one was Genesis on the 20th of July. And it's the first time. It's battery operated equipment versus the hydraulics that we have. And the intent was obviously, we want to, we want to house our, our engine with a set of jaws versus the rescue, which everybody knows where we were with the rescue months ago. But we did have Genesis out on the 20th of July. We tried their tools. We were, we were awed. Both sets of tools have tremendous amounts of benefits to them. There's no doubt. But at that time, we were only able to use the Genesis ones. But we were able to gain input from local departments as well as departments statewide. And they had directed me to maybe try out this, this other brand, which ultimately is coming from Apollo, who does quite a bit of work for us for the city of Richmond as well. And they're a Hearst brand. And we had this gentleman out, his name is Scott McLeod. He's actually a Macomb Township firefighter. He does this on the side. He sells these tools. And brought the tools out on August 8th, I believe it was, and allowed us to try them out at Jeremy's. And the tools, they had other benefits that the Genesis tools, I guess, didn't have. They were easier to work with. The controls on it were easier to maintain. They were fast. They were very fast. Both tools were fast. Don't get me wrong, but these ones were even faster. And we were timing ourselves on how long it would take with regards to actually popping a door off of a, of a crushed vehicle. And we were, we were floored. I mean, so his, his price did come in a little bit more than the Genesis, but he had other benefits as well as, he is very, very close. If something were to go wrong with any one of the tools, he would immediately give us a loaner until this one is replaced. The battery life on these tools is quite a bit longer than the ones that are the Genesis brand, which the Genesis brand were the, the old Milwaukee, Milwaukee style battery. It's, it's, they're nice tools.
Very good. Any questions of the chief?
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Is there a motion?
I moved to waive purchasing ordinance requirements and approve the purchase of the extrication equipment in the amount of $27,650 from Apollo Fire Equipment.
Support.
Has been made and supported. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
As I said, I, you know, the, the fire department in previous session sessions had brought these concerns of issues with our, our other jaws and some of the advancing technologies in the car extrication, the need. So, I'm glad to see this is being addressed. I'm comfortable with the purchasing ordinance, doing the bid waiver. There's only so many manufacturers out there. And if this is the equipment, if the amount of money difference, I don't think it's unreasonable to consider going with the one the department is more comfortable with, especially at a time when you're doing an extrication and somebody's in a car. I think you want our people using the equipment that they're most comfortable with. So, I appreciate that that's getting done. And, I'm sorry, what was, delivery is?
Six to eight weeks.
Six to eight weeks.
After, after orders placed, which obviously, hopefully within the next couple days, the order would be placed. So, it's, I'd say eight weeks out. He said he could probably do six, but.
Anything else? Okay. Has been made and supported. There's no other discussion? Mr. City Manager?
I'll just do the roll call though.
Yeah.
Did have to step away.
Everybody good? Okay, roll call, please.
Warren?
Yes.
Yarick?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
LaFleur?
Yes.
Mistravich?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes. Motion passes. Don't move.
Thank you, council. Good seeing you all again. We'll see you soon.
I think you're here for one more, are you not?
One more.
Number three? Yes. Okay. Consideration of M-A-B-A-S, St. Clair County. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving the updated Mutual Aid, Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm System Agreement, otherwise known as MABUS. In 2015, the city council approved the MABUS agreement, but it has had some changes. And both Macomb and St. Clair Chiefs Association are requesting that the council adopt the updated version. There's also a sheet there that summarizes at the end that St. Clair County provided on the changes. It essentially kind of tightens up the language regarding payment for the special operation teams.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything that you'd like to add to that, chief?
No, it's just, I attend, there's, there's Macomb County Chiefs meetings, which are usually the first Wednesday of every month. Last week is, I'm sorry, last week was Macomb County Chiefs meeting. Next Tuesday is St. Clair County Chiefs meeting. St. Clair County seems to be trying to move into the direction that Macomb County is with a lot of their practices, I guess, we're saying. And I've only been attending the St. Clair County Chiefs meetings for seven, eight months now. And I am very much in favor of the MABUS agreement, which is a mutual alarm box system. And what it does is it, it just puts things in place with regards to, it activates teams depending on the, the circumstances. And, you know, I've been up there as well as some of the other local fire chiefs that have been talking about, you know, what advantages these bring to the table. And I think we're just, we're in a convincing, we're trying to convince them to, that this is something that they should go with. And, you know, I wanted to make sure that I had the blessing as well from our council to not only do it in Macomb County, but to also extend it to St. Clair County. I support it.
Very good. Any questions of the chief? Being that, a motion be in order.
I'm going to approve the updated Michigan Mutual Aid Box System Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Support.
Has been made and supported. Any further discussion? Being that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Thank you, chief.
Thanks, folks. Have a good evening.
Item number four is consideration of rescinding the guideline for soliciting on city streets. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider rescinding the guidelines for soliciting on city streets. The attached policy approved in 2014 provided the city council with guidance for handling requests from nonprofit organizations to solicit funds within the intersections. In July of this year, the Attorney General Bill Shute issued an opinion on whether civic or service clubs could solicit contributions in the public streets and highways. And according to the Attorney General, the Uniform Traffic Code prohibits a person in the improved portion of roadway from soliciting contributions in support of a civic or charitable organization from the occupant of any vehicle. Council discussed this at their quarterly roundtable meeting. We do have VFW, KFC, and Lions Club that throughout the years have, from time to time, requested permission. This will allow administration to kind of have it formally that we are following the Attorney's General, Attorney General's opinion. And I have talked with a number of the members of the Lions Club, and they have already started to make arrangements and kind of brainstorm on new and creative ways to sell their Goodfellow papers. So, I think they kind of, many in the group saw this coming, and they've already started to find ways to adjust.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to rescind the guidelines for soliciting in the city streets in order to follow the Attorney General's opinion related to the Uniform Traffic Code.
Support.
Has been made and supported. Any discussion? As it was stated that we, we talked about this quite extensively during our workshop meeting. Really, we do not have a choice to this. This is the state law. And it's evidently, was it a state senator who requested the opinion of the Attorney General, I believe?
Yes.
And which has put it very, very clear. We're not allowed to condone that and/or authorize it. So, sign of the times, definitely, you know. But also luckily, we've never had anybody hurt, to my knowledge, out on those corners collecting. It's been a tradition in a lot of cases, you know, for all the groups in town. It's going to be a tradition that's going to go away. But hopefully, they can find new ways of doing that and hopefully not step on each other's toes when it comes to the red kettles and, you know, the, some of the other fundraisers that we've had on our main drag there. So, hopefully, all the organizations can work together on this. Any other comments? Go right ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's unfortunate for the groups that have, who collect in this way. And I know it's going to be a thing of change. One of the things we brought up said that the number of years that some of the community, that some of the groups were doing this. But it appears from the Attorney General's opinion that in actuality, we never really had the authority to grant that. And I think a lot of communities just over the years kind of developed, started allowing it without necessarily having the, the authority under the law to do it. So, I think it's appropriate to follow the Attorney General's opinion on this and be in, in step with the law.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd also concur with the comments that were made. You know, even though it's Attorney General's opinion, you can wait to see what happens as far as the legislation, which I understand is probably going to be legislated to follow that opinion. But also with the consulting that we got from our city attorney, who also agreed with this Attorney General opinion, and also our insurance carrier, it's just, and also MDOT as well, that it's, it, our hands are tied, as you mentioned, that we have to, we, we really don't have a choice. If we did allow it, we'd put ourselves in, as a city, potentially in trouble if something happened. And especially now with, there's a lot of distracted driving going on, that who knows what could happen to some good volunteers that are out there trying to collect for charitable organizations and, and something could happen to them. We don't want to be a part of agreeing to, agreeing to that happening.
I don't disagree with either of your statements. I disagree with the fact that it was a, an operation that we should have been doing in the first place. There's been so much interpretation of the laws over the, the last so many years. I guess if you, if you went to the, to the law book and looked at all the laws that we have, it's probably still illegal to spit on the street. But we're not going to arrest people for that. Jaywalking is illegal. It happens all day long. Even the state police don't pull people over when they jaywalk. There are certain laws that, are laws that don't hurt anybody normally. I, I think this is probably being addressed more because of our drivers today. The aggressive driving, the, the lack of paying attention to what's in front of you, on the side of you, and, and in front of you. And for the safety of these organizations that are, are out there, it puts an end to it. There's no doubt about it. It doesn't put those people in jeopardy. I thought it was ridiculous when I saw people doing this down on 23 in Grashit. The, the, the cars down there are everywhere. They're coming from everywhere. They're coming out of all the driveways. They're, they're, they're coming from everywhere and the, the numbers are unbelievable. But what brought to mind here was one of the, one of our neighbors, very small town, who collected money to put on a fireworks during their festival. They stood out in the middle. Firemen who also raised money for various pieces of equipment, I believe, and maybe the restoration of one of their antique trucks. You know, you don't have near the traffic there. You also don't have supermarkets. You don't have K-Marts. You don't have where hundreds, if not thousands of people a day are walking into stores. And it's going, it's going to be tough on, on them to raise money. You know, everybody loves a drive-in, right? It's so easy just to pull up to McDonald's and get a hamburger versus going in and sitting down and having one. We're all busy. Everybody don't have a time. Well, when the guy's out there standing in the middle of the street asking for a buck for, for a rotary paper, for a Lions Goodfellows paper, you know, in a, in a, in that scenario, that's about the only way that, that organization's going to be able to come up with the monies that they want. That, and I spoke earlier about the tradition of, of having them out there and saying Merry Christmas, you know, during that time of year to people you might not otherwise see during the course of the year. It's just another law that, yes, it's maybe been on the books for years and years, but the state didn't even choose to enforce it. And now, here we are. So, you know, I don't know. I just look at the, where we were and where we're heading. And it seems like, you know, government is protecting us from ourselves. And you've got to use some common sense. You don't stick people in the middle of 23 and Hall Road, or, I'm sorry, 23 and Grashit, or Hall Road and, and Grashit, or any of those other extremely busy, busy intersections. But when it comes to some of our smaller communities and some of the less frequented roads where these people have been staying out there for decades, selling poppies or whatever it is they're doing, I, I just don't know why we have to put everybody in the same box. Good luck in Lansing. Good luck in Lansing. Because you have to look at these things. You can't look at, this is the law and this particular Attorney General is saying, you know, we're going to enforce it. Had, I believe, the senator not brought this to the Attorney General, we'd probably still be out there. The Lions Club would still be out there soliciting for their paper. The KSC would still be out there, the VFW, you know, all the different organizations would still be out there. But when the Attorney General has been asked to do this by a senator, my understanding from recent, or from years ago, they must give an opinion when a senator asks. So, I don't blame this on the Attorney General. I really don't blame it on anybody. But I just wonder what, what made this happen in the first place. Anyhow, I'm just looking at it, growing up with, you know, that's the way it's always been done in Richmond. And it's part of the small-town living. And they just took part of my small-town living away, traditions. So, that bothers me. I, I don't think there's anything we can really do about it unless we send the right people to Lansing. And they think about those type of small-town things when they're legislating. So, anyhow, any other comments?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do completely agree with you that it is a slippery slope to allow the state to come in and take away things that are unique about each community and not take that in consideration. Because we are different than just a couple miles down the road. We're just as much as Sterling Heights is different than Detroit or up north. Or I think of like in Posen where the potato festival is, and nobody is on that road except for the people going to church on Sunday. And they're not able to do this either. So, I, it, it is a slippery slope that we, we head down. So, I concur.
Anything else? Being that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to city manager's comments, sir.
I did get a call today from the teacher advisor for the Junior Honor Society. Once again, this year, they'll be doing their rake and run event where they go out and rake people's yards for them for free. They've done that, I think, the last three years. And they will have door hangers that they put on the person's door to let them know. I think they're focusing on the area just around the school. They don't have as many parent helpers this year. So, it's, I think, probably like South Forest and some areas like that.
Not Monroe Street?
I, you know, I can certainly forward some addresses.
Your turn, please.
If you want to, if you want to give them to me. But anyway, they'll be doing that this Thursday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And they've, that teacher's worked with me over the years to make sure they understand all of the rules for yard waste that we have. So, there shouldn't be any issues. There hasn't been in the past. This Thursday also, at 7:00 o'clock, our planning commission will be seeking input from the public on the community master plan. As part of that process, a couple different times, we need to have input from the public. This is one of those times. The Macomb County Planning and Economic Development Department will have staff here to kind of lead the public who attend through some exercises to gain input on the, on the master plan. And then, if you're out and about in the cemetery, the new hedgerow has been installed out there.
Oh, great.
It was installed last week.
If we should just be out and about.
It's great.
Yeah. And we also closed on the house on Main Street.
Yes, correct. Just north of Marceal's there on Main Street between Monroe and Park on the east side of the road, that yellow varnish type house slash building we closed last week.
Very good. Moving on to council comments. Dennis?
Just want to wish Jeff the best of luck on his run for state rep election tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, hopefully everything goes your way.
Okay, Jeff?
Two things. Want to thank the chamber, well, actually, for two things, for the treats in the streets and the scarecrow competition, those two events. I really appreciate their participation in making those happen. I, I think everything, the streets look pretty good.
I was going to say something.
You know, we don't, I think all the scarecrows are picked up. I also want to thank Troop 84, our Boy Scouts in Richmond, who invited a council member to come on. And I appreciate the opportunity to go speak to them. They had some really good questions. It, you know, they really hit me hard with some stuff. They said, what was my position on Common Core? I said, I see we're going to have a, this is going to be a good, felt a little more like a press conference. But no, kudos to them for showing an interest and, and wanting to, you know, talk about government. So, thank to them.
John?
I have nothing tonight.
Um, Lee?
Just also...
Just also, good luck to you tomorrow, Jeff. We're all rooting for you. And also, I was very pleased with the scarecrow contest again this year. It was bigger and better than last year. And also, the ladies' night out on the 5th was very good. So good work by our chamber.
Very good. Jamie?
I have a few things, sir. One is just a notification that the Community Baptist Church has officially changed their name to Grace Community Church.
Saw that on the sign last night.
Just for clarification.
Grace Community Church?
Grace Community Church.
Still affiliated with the Baptists or not necessarily?
No, not, well, we were not related to the Baptists recently anyways. We were self-governing. So we just had the Baptist name.
Okay.
So that just, because we don't have very many churches in town, so I thought that was a big deal. Second is the scarecrow contest. And congratulations to the library for winning. And Wilbur was beautiful. And I just thank the chamber for the excellent job at the cleaning up. There's no hay left behind. It looks beautiful. And also, this was one of the best years of the contest. Everything held together so nicely. It seemed like people thought about it even more so than they have in the past on putting it together. And its structure withstood the weather. And it looked really fantastic for the time that we had. It was like perfect timing. My third thing and final thing would just be, this video will probably come out after the election. And I just want to remind our residents to hold your elected officials accountable, no matter on what level you guys hold us. We get phone calls all the time. And just up and down from the school board to the President of the United States. Just make sure that you continue to stay in contact with them. Don't be afraid to call. Call us. Email us. It's all, the elected officials work for you. And just as a public service announcement reminder of that.
Michael?
I concur. Nothing else, Dan?
I concur also. Let's go to the calendar. Today being the 7th, of course, our polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. tomorrow night on Festival Drive at the community center. It's the North End recyclable cleanup on the 8th and, or pickup, I'm sorry. And on the 15th will be the South End. We also, as mentioned earlier, this Thursday night at 7:00 o'clock here at City Hall will be the Public Input Night. Come on down. And we will have the county here to help us through a master plan, plan. And this is just part of one area of the master plan where we want to get public input on various issues. What you'd like to see, it's your chance to come on down and talk about what you'd like to see in our community in the future. Library Board will be meeting a week from tonight at the library on the 14th. Cable Commission will be meeting on the 15th at 7:00 o'clock here at City Hall. The EDC will be meeting on the 17th at City Hall at 7:00 o'clock. And of course, two weeks from tonight will be our next regular scheduled city council meeting. Did I have some, well, there, right underneath the calendar. Our community tree lighting and Santa parade will be Friday, the first Friday of December, December 2nd. And I believe that will start at 6:30, approximately 6:30. The parade will start at the Kmart Plaza. It will go north, a block north of the town clock, turn around, come back to the auditorium on Main Street where we will have the community tree lighting, and the kids can visit with Santa. The community, Richmond Community Theater will be producing Charlie Brown Christmas, the musical, that will be on Friday, November 25th and Saturday, November 26th. That will be held at Manasseh's Banquet Hall. There is a cost there. The phone number for that would be 727-9727. And I believe that is all we have right now. Is there anything else that we need to put on the calendar?
Mr. Mayor, if I just can add to, you mentioned that recycling was the North End this week.
Yes.
Just a reminder to residents, recycling's every other week, but yard waste, they pick up every week. So I've had a couple of calls and some emails on that, and just wanted to remind that yard waste is picked up every week.
Now, that is until the 29th of November.
Correct, correct. Yes, through this month.
Okay. And if we have an issue where some of the trees aren't shedding quite yet, if we have an issue, we can always extend that if we see that the trees are...
Yeah, we'll take a look, yeah. Towards the next couple of weeks, we'll kind of tell.
Yeah, yeah. Couple of frosts and a couple of rains will probably take care of it.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes we'll do, and we'll put that out on the website through the notify me if we choose to extend it. But yeah, the next couple of weeks, we'll kind of know.
Okay. Had a couple of meetings the last few weeks since the last city council with a few organizations in town. And I think there'll be some things coming back to city council very quickly on some of those issues that we've been talking about for, in some cases, a few years. In other cases, you know, something we've been talking about in the last few months, trying to get together on. So matter of fact, I believe we may be seeing something at the next meeting on the property.
From the Historical Society?
From the Historical Society.
Yeah, that's my understanding. I know I went out there the following day after our meeting on Wednesday, and there was two members out there with maps kind of looking. So I think their intention is to try and get something at the next council meeting.
Yeah.
Have it back on our, in front of us.
Okay. There is no closed session. Is there any other business for the city council this evening? Being that, motion adjourned be in order?
Making motion to adjourn.
Support.
What's been made in support, there's no discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
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 Very good. Turner says yes. Here adjourned. Thanks for being with us.